Good evening and welcome to the 1,142nd Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council after holding their own public hearing makes the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have ten days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If the Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
President.
Mrs. McHugh.
Here.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Karen Magnos here. Chairman Walsh.
Is here. Also with us tonight we have Mark Tormina and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. Again, I just want to remind the folks in the audience that with each of these items, you're going to hear the item called. The petitioner will, our Planning Department will give some background information on the petition. The petitioner will then be asked to come up and speak to the item, and then there'll be an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against the item to also come forward. So with that, if the Secretary is ready, please start with number one on the public hearing section of our agenda.
Petition 2019-03-02-04 submitted by My Mechanics Place requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 11.03K of the City of Livonia Zoning Ordinance Number 543 as amended for the outdoor storage and rental of U-Haul trucks at 35655 Plymouth Road located in the south side of Plymouth Road between Yale and Levan Road in the northeast quarter of Section 32.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, and we'll start with Mr. Tormina.
Thank you again. This is a request for outside storage and the rental of U-Haul trucks and trailers. This is property located on the south side of Plymouth Road. It's between Yale and Levan Roads. The site is roughly 1.7 acres in size. It has 273 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road and a depth of roughly 270 feet. As you can see from the zoning map, zoning of the property is C2 general business, as are the properties immediately to the east and to the west of the subject site. Across Plymouth Road on the north side is the Ford Transmission Plant, which is zoned M2 general manufacturing. And then lying to the south are single-family homes that are part of the Kenwood Park subdivision. There's an existing building on the property. It's about 19,000 square feet. It contains 14 service bays. The principal use of the site is an automotive car/truck repair business. Parking, as you can see from the aerial photograph, is available both on the north side of the building as well as on the west side of the building. There's also vehicle storage located within a fenced and gated area at the rear of the building. Section 11.03K of the ordinance allows for the open-air display and rental of utility trailers subject to waiver use approval. The waiver use for the automotive truck repair business was granted by City Council in 1993, so that's a use that's been ongoing for several years. In 1995, the previous tenant of this property, which was Super High Tech Auto Service Center, did request waiver use approval for the outdoor storage and rental of U-Haul trucks. That request back in 95 was denied mainly because the Commission at the time believed that the use would be detrimental to the neighborhood to the south. This matter is before you this evening as an after-the-fact request as the current owner entered into a contract with U-Haul without first going through the waiver use approval process. The rental vehicles would utilize, or he would utilize, the Westerly 20 parking spaces in the parking lot. That area is shaded on this plan. The vehicles would include utility and cargo trailers as well as pickup trucks, vans, as well as several different sized box trucks. Parking for automobile and light truck repair facilities based on two parking spaces for each repair bay plus one space for each employee. So by zoning ordinance standards, the principal use of the property, the auto repair business, would require 33 parking spaces. The plan shows a total of 56 parking spaces, so if you eliminate 20 for the purposes of storing U-Haul trucks and trailers, that allows for 36 spaces to be available for customers and employees, which is three more than what the ordinance requires. So the site does comply in terms of the parking. There's a special requirement in the ordinance regarding the adequate lighting for the storage and rental of these vehicles. There are existing light poles along the west property line directly over the area where the rental vehicles are parked. There is another special requirement that the area must be fenced and enclosed. This site is not in compliance with that requirement. There is no fence provided or proposed and would thus require approval by City Council. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
Our first item is dated April 3rd. It's from the Engineering Division, and it reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above-referenced waiver use petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time. The existing parcel has assigned the address of 35655 Plymouth Road. The legal description provided with the petition appears to be correct and should be used with the subject petition. The existing building is currently serviced by Public Sanitary, Storm, and Water Main. The information submitted does not indicate any new connections to the existing utility services, so it appears that there will not be any additional impacts to the existing systems at this time. Should alterations to the existing services be required, the owner will need to provide plans to this department to determine if permits will be required. Should the owner do any work within the Plymouth Road right-of-way, they will need to contact the Michigan Department of Transportation for any permits that may be required." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter from the Livonia Fire and Rescue dated April 10th, and it reads, "We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. Number one, a fire access road shall be provided with not less than 20 feet of unobstructed width and have a minimum of 13 feet 6 inches of vertical clearance in accordance to 18.23411 and 1823412 of NFPA 1/2015. Number two, gate access for fire department vehicles must provide for 20 feet of unobstructed width on the west side and the rear lots. And three, Knox box or Knox locks on gated entries must be installed per the fire department access." And that letter is signed by Greg Thomas, Senior Fire Inspector. Next is a letter coming from our Division of Police Traffic Bureau indicating that they have no objections to the proposal. That letter is dated April 10th and signed by Brian Lee, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from the Inspection Department dated April 30th that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above-referenced petition has been reviewed and the following is noted. Number one, this plan does not make provision for a dumpster or dumpster enclosure. The Commission and/or Council may wish to determine how trash disposal will be maintained at this site. And number two, a fence is required to enclose the area of the rental vehicles. It is unclear if a fence is being provided according to the proposed plan. This department has no further objections to this petition." That letter is signed by Jerome Hanna, Director of Inspection. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finances. There are no amounts receivable, general, or water and sewer. That letter is signed by Colleen Coleman, Chief Accountant for the city. And lastly, a letter of no objection coming from the Office of Treasure dated April 3rd and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. And I'll just note that the indication from the Inspection Department that there is no dumpster on the site, we did verify that there is. While it is not shown on this plan, there is a dumpster located behind the building within that fenced-in area. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tormina. Do we have any questions for the Planning Staff? Ms. Smiley?
The letter from the Fire Department, I'm not sure about that. Do we have to, they have to have a fire access road and all that? What is that about?
Well, I think that's just their perimeter access. And so the area that's fenced off, any areas that are fenced off on this property, they would need to have access, and that's provided through a Knox box. That's something that they coordinate with the owner to get access. I don't see that being a problem in this particular case. They do have at least access on three sides of the building without any obstructions other than the fence, and again, they can deal with that with the owner in terms of providing the necessary access through that.
Okay, that was my, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our Planning Staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bonjero.
Mark, Jerome was saying from the Building Department that it's required to have a fence for the U-Haul area?
Yeah, that is a requirement in the ordinance for this type of use. I think that was discussed briefly at the meeting where it was indicated by the representative from U-Haul that it has not been an issue with security at these locations. Did not feel that it was necessary, so they would seek a waiver from Council if this, depending on what your recommendation is.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, if the petitioner's here, please come forward. Good evening, sir.
How you doing?
Good. We always ask that you start with your name and address for our record.
Hi, my name is Jamison Robeau. My address is 12067 Boston Post, Livonia, Michigan, 48150.
Thank you. And is there anything else that you want to add from what you've already heard?
I've never done this before, so...
We'll go easy on you.
Thanks. It's my first name. My Mechanics Place is a unique business plan where we provide the services for people to work on their vehicles themselves. The business is kind of an à la carte business, and U-Hauls are providing a huge service to the community by giving the opportunity for our customers to get their cars there and to and from there with the car haulers and auto dollies. It provides us a service to the whole community. As you can see, we have a petition there of many names, our customers and neighbors around us. Everybody seems to approve of us. We haven't really seen any incidents of increasing crime or anything like that. I really don't know what else to say. We have a privacy fence up there. The U-Haul services are, we have the opportunity for a 24-hour drop-off, so having it enclosed and locked behind a gate would be detrimental to its operation, so...
I see.
No, I don't have anything else to say.
Well, that's a perfectly good presentation, Mr. Robeau. You did well.
Thank you.
We will see if there's any questions for you from any of the Commissioners. Do we have any questions for our petitioner? Ms. Smiley?
So I'm understanding that you're going to ask for a waiver to not put up a fence, right?
There, there's currently, they have these poles that are sunk in.
I see them on the picture up there.
Yeah, and those prevent vehicles from being pulled from the lot. Other than that, there is a gate there, but we don't close it because of the 24-hour access.
Okay, and none of your neighbors have had a complaint about any of this? And how long has it been going on?
We, yeah, we inadvertently entered into the contract with them knowing that we would have to go through this process, and we're just trying to comply to the requirements of the City of Livonia. But we've been operating for about two years now.
With no incident?
With no incident.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Chair, Mrs. Smiley asked my questions.
She stole your questions. All right. Do we have any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Bonjero?
How are you? You and I, I met you there a couple weeks ago. You were kind of walking around in the back lot. You had said that some of the vehicles stay there for extended periods of time, and you don't want that because you want to see those vehicles being repaired and taken out in a timely manner. And you were also talking about maybe instituting a policy where there's a time limit, whether it be 30, 60 days, and then they've got to get it out, or you're going to take it out. Are you still considering that?
Yeah, we, what we do is we maintain an open dialogue with our customers for their needs. We do offer them opportunities to do some short-term storage outside while they're waiting for an engine or a transmission or some component of their vehicle. It's been our experience in the three and a half years that we've been there that once in a while, somebody, you know, is not honest, and I end up with a vehicle. So we, so we now offer the storage for 30 days, and then we review that at the end of 30 days if they still need it. And it'll go up to, I don't know, I haven't really gone beyond 90 days because after 90 days, I feel like they're being disingenuous, and so we contact Livonia Towing, they mark it, and we have it removed from the property. We were asked not to have a junkyard back there, and it's my determination not to do so.
It looks better. I was there today. It looks better than even a couple...
But we're currently involved in spring cleanup, so we're trying to get all the vegetation knocked back and the parking lot covered and all that.
Okay, one more question. If you go to Council for the waiver on the fence and they want a fence, is that a deal breaker for you, or are you going to do it?
This is my dream, so... No, it's not a deal breaker.
You'd do it? Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our petitioner? Seeing none? Mr. Robeau, just one question. I think we asked this at the study meeting, but I wanted to get it on the record. What percentage would you say of your total business is based on the U-Haul operation?
Currently, U-Haul's running roughly around 25% of our revenue.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? Sir, please feel free to come forward. Good evening, and again, we'll just ask your name and address as well.
Nick Nichols, 50547 South Tyler, Plymouth, Michigan.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. And what would you like to say?
I'd just like to add that I've been a longtime customer of Jay's. I've worked on my vehicles at his garage, and as far as the issue that comes up about the storage behind his building, I have had dialogue with him about mine as my vehicle was stored there for an extended period of time. I just wanted to add that he does talk to all of his customers about his vehicles. He has no intention of keeping a junkyard back there. I recently moved my vehicle out, and it is relatively organized back there, as you saw recently also. So that's all I wanted to add. That's all.
Excellent. Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Don't see anybody else. Mr. Robeau, we always like to give you the final word. Is there anything else you would like to add?
No.
You're all set? Okay, good. With that, we'll close the public hearing, and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Smiley?
Yeah, I would like to make an approving resolution that the request for the outdoor storage and rental of U-Haul trucks at 35655 Plymouth Road is hereby approved subject to City Council approval in the following conditions: that the outdoor storage of U-Haul trucks and trailers shall be limited to the designated location as shown on the site plan received by the Planning Commission on March 29th of 2019; that the outdoor storage and the rental of U-Haul trucks at this location shall be permitted providing that the zoning ordinance standard set forth in Section 11.03K6 requiring that the display area be enclosed with a fence is waived by the City Council; that the total number of trucks and trailers to be stored and displayed outdoors at this location shall not exceed 20; and that no trucks or trailers shall be displayed closer than 20 feet to the front lot line; that all light fixtures shall not exceed 20 feet in height and shall not be aimed and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize the stray light trespassing across the property lines and glaring into the adjacent roadways; that the rear parking lot shall be cleaned to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department, including the removal of all debris and weeds and trimming of existing trees along the back wall; all dead, dying, and deceased plant material shall be removed and replaced with a new plant material; and all gaps along the rear property line where evergreen trees or shrubs were previously removed shall be replaced; that unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsor vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited; that there shall be no outdoor storage of auto parts, scrap material, waste petroleum products, junked, unlicensed, or inoperable vehicles, or other similar items in connection with this operation; that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on the site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows; that no overhead speakers will be used inside or outside of this building; that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals; that the specific plan referenced in this approved resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time an occupancy permit is applied for and pursuant to Section 19.10 of the Ordinance Number 543, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia. This approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by the City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period. Further, the Planning Commission recommends the approval of a conditional agreement limiting this waiver use to this user only, with the provision to extend this waiver use approval to a new user only upon the approval of the new user by the City Council.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mrs. McHugh. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, if the Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Karen Magnos votes aye. Chairman Walsh.
Votes aye? Motion passes, and we'll go on to City Council and approving recommendation. Thank you for coming tonight. And before we go into item number two on our agenda, in my enthusiasm of getting started on the agenda, I did neglect to note that item number five on our agenda, which is the sign request for Bob's Discount Furniture, the petitioner has asked that that item be postponed to a future meeting, so if anybody's here for that item, it will not be discussed this evening. So with that, we'll go back to our regularly scheduled agenda and item number two.
And that is petition 2019-04-02-05 submitted by Piano Shoe Properties LLC requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 10.03J of the City of Livonia Zoning Ordinance Number 543 as amended to utilize a microbrewer license, including redeveloping the site, expanding the parking lot, and modifying the exterior facade of the existing building in connection with the operation of a brew pub, Piano Shoe Brewery, at 27717 and 27719 Seven Mile Road located on the south side of Seven Mile Road between Inkster Road and Harrison Avenue in the northeast section, northeast quarter of Section 12.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Tormina?
Thank you. Again, this is a request to operate a microbrewery in connection with the redevelopment and reuse of a site that is located at the southeast corner of Seven Mile and Deering. This site is about a quarter mile west of Inkster Road. It's a relatively small site. It's under half an acre. It's .45 acre. It has 115 feet of frontage on Seven Mile Road and roughly 170 feet along Deering. The zoning is C1, local business, and relatively new to the C1 district regulations is a provision under Sections 10.03J which allows establishments having liquor licenses, including Class C, small distiller, and microbrewer. Licensed microbrewers which produce less than 1,000 barrels per year can qualify to sell direct to licensed Michigan retailers. They can also sell beer to consumers for consumption on the premises as well as for takeout and offer free samples. There are a number of special requirements that pertain to this type of use. The first is that they must not be located within 1,000 feet of any other such licensed establishment. There are two Class C licensed businesses located within 1,000 feet of this site. The first one is on the north side of Seven Mile. It's about 267 feet west, and that is the Corsi's Restaurant and Banquet Hall. And then located on the south side of Seven Mile Road, about 400 feet west of the site, is the Up North Craft Bar, which is the former Sands Lounge. So the City Council will have to waive this separation requirement. Another requirement under Section 10.03J3 specifies that no microbrewer shall be located within 400 feet of a church or a school. There are no churches or schools within this 400 feet. The site contains, as you can see from the existing survey, a small commercial building as well as a parking lot that is located at the north end of the property adjacent to Seven Mile Road. The balance of the site is undeveloped and maintained as a lawn. The existing building will remain and will be used mainly for the brewing operations as well as for indoor seating for customers. Additional seating would be available in an outdoor beer garden that would be created on the east side of the building. This beer garden would measure roughly 36 feet by 59 feet for a total of 2,124 square feet. The existing parking lot, which is located adjacent to the east side of the building, would remain, but that only contains two parking spaces. So a new parking lot would be created on the south portion of the property, and that would contain a total of 19 parking spaces. Access to this new parking lot would be from a single driveway located off of Deering Street, and there's a six-foot wide sidewalk that would connect the new parking lot to the side of the building. Screening would be provided along the south property line between the new parking lot and the adjacent residential property, and that would consist of a seven-foot high wall as well as landscaping. A new concrete approach would be created off of Deering. This is on the south side of the building, and this would mainly be used to service the rear of the building's service areas, which includes a loading zone as well as a dumpster enclosure. Inside the building would be the brewing, which would occur at the back half of the site or the building. There would be a small bar area as well as room for additional customer seating as well as bathrooms. The area located in the front part of the building would have tables and seating for 18 persons. The bar area would have nine bar stools, and the remaining back half of the building, as I indicated, would contain the brewing area. Through the bar would be an access door that would go right directly to the beer garden. The beer garden itself would be a combination of pavers and grass. This area would be enclosed by a four-and-a-half-foot-high decorative metal fence. There would be seating available for an estimated 30 persons. Between the parking lot and the beer garden would be a bioretention area. This would be used to manage the site's storm-water runoff. There's an additional, smaller bioretention area that is shown in the northeast corner of the site. In terms of parking, customer seating would include 27 inside the building and 30 within the beer garden, so the required parking would be 24 spaces. This includes one space for every two seats inside the building and one space for every three seats outside the building, but this does not include employees. So the 21 parking spaces that are shown altogether on the site results in a deficiency of three parking spaces at least. The petitioner has indicated in his letter to you that he is pursuing an arrangement with a neighboring commercial business to rent parking spaces. Looking at the building itself, the exterior would be modified. It's currently masonry blocks. That would be repaired and repainted. There would be an existing mansard roof that's on the front of the building that would be removed. A new door and new window would be installed on the east elevation as well as a new canopy that would be over a portion of the sidewalk. And this is a rendering showing what the building would look like, generally speaking, after the reservations are complete. In terms of landscaping, a fully detailed landscape plan was submitted with the application. Green space on the site constitutes roughly 40% of the property, so that's well above the 15% that we look for as a minimum. The majority of the new plant material would be located both on the north and the south sides of the beer garden for screening, as well as within the bioretention areas, and then behind the building to screen the service area, and then lastly, along the south property line in conjunction with the wall. That wall, as I indicated, has been modified. Originally, it was shown as five feet in height. That's been increased to seven feet in height, although we do not have details at this time. And lastly, in terms of signage, this business would be allowed one wall sign equal to one square foot per one foot of frontage. There is no ground sign allowed due to the non-conforming setback of the building, so any additional signage would have to go back before the Zoning Board of Appeals for approval. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
First is a letter from Engineering dated April 15th that reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above-referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time. The existing parcels are assigned the addresses of 27717 and 27719 Seven Mile Road. The legal descriptions provided appear to be correct and should be used in conjunction with this petition. The existing parcels are currently serviced by Public Utilities, and no disruption to the existing service..."
the existing service leads is planned. The developer has been in contact with this department and is aware of the site plan requirements, including stormwater detention and the requirements for certifying that the storm sewer outlet has the available capacity to handle the additional flows from the site. It should be noted that the developer will also be required to obtain Wayne County permits for any work within the Seven Mile Road right of way. We will provide a detailed review once full engineering site plans have been submitted for approval." A letter signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter from our Livonia Fire and Rescue dated April twenty second and signed by Keith Bowe, Fire Marshal. He indicates he has no objection to the proposal. A similar letter of no objection was provided by the Division of Police dated April sixteenth and signed by Brian Lee, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from the inspection department dated April thirtieth that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed and the following is noted: Number one, parking spaces shall be ten feet wide by twenty feet deep and double striped; and two, the commission and/or council may wish to address exterior lighting on this property. This department has no further objections to this petition." That letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. We have a letter of no objection from the Department of Finance, "Is there no outstanding amounts receivable, general or water and sewer?" That letter is signed by Colleen Coleman, Chief Accountant. The Office of Treasurer indicates that at this time there are no taxes due and therefore they have no objections to the proposal." That's signed by Linda Sheal and dated April eleventh. Department of Assessment has a letter dated April twelfth that reads, "The petition submitted by Piano Shoe Properties LLC involves two individual tax parcels. The current owner on Livonia's tax part records is Seven Mile Livonia Center LLC. If the ownership has transferred, Michigan law requires the buyer to bring a copy of the property transfer affidavit to the local assessor's office. The owner of the property will need to apply for a combination of the two parcels in conjunction with this petition." And that letter is signed by Mary Chilano. Next is a letter from the Division of Police, our Special Services Bureau dated April seventeenth, and the letter reads, "We reviewed the plan submitted by Piano Shoe Properties LLC, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to section ten point zero three J. After conferring with the chief of police, we have identified the following issues for consideration. Both Corsi's Restaurant and Banquet Hall, located at two seven nine one zero Seven Mile, and Up North Craft Beer, located at two eight zero zero one Seven Mile, hold an active Class C liquor license and are well within the one thousand foot separation requirement distance of the proposed site. We ask that the city council give significant consideration for approval or denial of this waiver use request." That letter is signed by Jeff Ronean, Special Services Bureau. And lastly, we have a letter from a resident, Cheryl Cassick. It's dated May ninth and it reads as follows. Dear Planning Commission members, I am writing concerning the request for waiver use approval in the above mentioned petition. My family and I are not able to attend the hearing scheduled for May fourteenth, as we are scheduled to be out of town and therefore I am writing to voice our concerns. Our property located at one nine zero zero four Deering Street adjoins the property being considered in this petition on the southern property line. My family has owned and resided on this property since approximately nineteen seventy. We are a very close family and our summers are spent together outdoors, barbecuing, swimming, and entertaining for birthdays, holidays, and weekends. I have young granddaughters who spend the entire summers in our backyard. We love being Livonia residents and plan to continue so. Our concerns with the filed petition and the proposed development are safety, privacy, and noise slash lighting intrusion. A microbrewery with an outdoor beer garden area will have many people coming and going, but more importantly, they will mostly be staying in an outdoor area drinking alcoholic beverages. We have been advised that there will be outside games provided for entertainment, such as cornhole and Jenga. As you know, when people are drinking at a bar, they tend to be loud. This is fine for most unless it is twelve AM and you happen to live right next door to the beer garden, as my home will be if this is permitted. The plans indicate that parking is located directly in front of the proposed five foot high false brick screen wall. We feel because a major portion of the parking will be against the part of our property, which is our outdoor living area, where our family will be enjoying outdoor activities, a five foot wall with nothing between the wall and the vehicles would not block guests of the brewery from viewing those activities, especially from tall trucks, or possibly accessing our backyard. We request that a seven foot wall be erected with the addition of tall shrubbery evergreens planted on our side of the wall and the existing chain link fence be removed. Although we would request that the initial expense of the shrubbery along the wall be borne by the brewery, in the spirit of cooperation, these plantings would be installed and maintained by us. If a seven foot wall is not possible, we would request that there be a grassy area with tall shrubbery and evergreens planted on the brewery side between the vehicle parking and the five foot wall to dissuade unwanted viewing and curiosity and to buffer any noise from the vehicles, as well as lights from the vehicles and building. We also request, due to the fact that we have a deep lot, that the proposed grassy areas at the east end of the parking lot also include some type of tall shrubbery evergreen that would block the noise of the vehicles and beer garden activities. I spoke with Mark Toramina and received correspondence from Andrew Schumacher, who both indicate that the hours of operation were going to be only on weekends and would close at reasonable hours for a neighborhood. However, during those hours, the outdoor guests will be playing games and drinking. That, we believe, necessitates the seven foot wall and all the grassy areas with shrubbery and evergreens sufficient to shield our backyard use. We believe that the balance of the proposed plans are adhered to, that hours of operation are within limits deemed reasonable for a residential neighborhood, and as specified in Mr. Schumacher's correspondence, and our requested modifications are implemented, it will provide for a more agreeable existence between Piano Shoe Brewery and our home. Thank you." And again, that letter is signed by Cheryl Cassick, who gives her address as one nine zero zero four Deering, Livonia, Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Toramina, are you aware of any factor that would prevent the retention area in the parking lot to be switched? In other words, that the retention area be adjacent to the home and the parking area be adjacent to the beer garden? Is there any thing that you're aware of that would preclude that?
The one factor, and I don't know if it's shown on any of these plans, is the proximity of the storm outlet from the bio retention number two. That's the main area that you're referring to, and I know that the outlet for that bio retention area is due west. Whether or not there is a limitation by moving that further to the south based on the grades of either the property or the slope of the, of the pipe, I don't know. So I'm not aware of a, of that kind of a, something that would prevent that.
So it's possible.
It, it, it may be possible from a hydrologic standpoint, yes.
And there are a number of site plans in our packages tonight, Mr. Toramina. One of which shows heavily planted area adjacent to what I'm assuming is a seven foot wall. So which site plan are we really looking at? Are we looking at the site plan with the plantings?
Yes, so, and I think we'll hear this from the petitioner shortly, but they have made, or he has made changes based on the communication that he's had with the neighbor to the south. And in response to her concerns, a seven foot wall has been, has replaced the original five foot wall, that's a, that would be a masonry wall. And in addition, there's a, been some shift to the parking lot, four feet, to provide some additional space for planting shrubs on the north side of that wall, I believe is what is shown. I know she indicates that she'd prefer those on the south side of the wall on her property, but these shrubs are shown on the north side of the wall. I've also indicated to Mr. Schumacher that they could, they could achieve at least four more feet of, of distance separation by reducing the depth of those parking stalls from twenty feet to eighteen feet on both sides, because there's no interference with sidewalks. That's something that we do allow. So despite what inspection indicated that the minimum size had to be ten by twenty, in this case, we could live with ten by eighteen foot deep spaces, because there is, again, no interference with, with public walkways in this case.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our planning staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magna.
Mark, is, is a seven foot wall a typical? I don't remember seeing very much about seven foot walls.
You know, we see them occasionally, but the standard, generally speaking, is five feet, but the ordinance does specify, specify five to seven feet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magna. Any other questions? I don't see any. The petitioner, I believe, is here. There we are. Good evening, sir, and again, we'll ask that you start with your name and address.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. My name is Andrew Schumacher. My address is one seven five 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 Dolores Street, Livonia, Michigan, four eight one five two.
Well, good evening, Mr. Schumacher. Is there anything else you would like to present about your business that you haven't already heard?
I, yes, I do have a, kind of a usage intent that I think will help answer some questions.
Please, go ahead.
So the primary intent of this property is to manufacture beer for sales through distribution, and as Mr. Toramina already stated, that under the MLCC license, a qualified microbrewer under a thousand barrels of production per year can sell directly to retailers. The brewing process that we would use would actually produce relatively few fumes and waste. The humidity would be controlled by the HVAC system, and the waste grain would be handled separately from the normal trash. Brewing, fermentation, storage, and packaging would all occur in the building, not outside on the property. As part of the license, as he said, free samples, on premise consumption, and takeout purchases are allowed as well. Our vision with the taproom is to have a family friendly space for friends to gather and enjoy spending time. We envision people playing board games and card games as a way to pass the time as they talk. I grew up traveling to Germany with my family. Half of them are from Germany and live there, and this idea for this space is influenced by the beer garden culture there, where people can gather. It's a community space where all ages are welcome, and it's a place to mingle and sit outside when the weather is nice. The purpose of the outdoor seating area is to provide a spot for everyone to sit, so everyone can be outside if they choose, not necessarily to double the amount of seats we have on the site. To accommodate the number of seats, we have reached out to adjacent business owners to talk about renting space from their parking lots. We think they are agreeable, we're still in communication, but as their hours are during the daytime, ours would be in the evening and night, there should not be an overlap or a pressure for the space taking away from their business. The hours of operation, we are planning to go Thursday through Sunday, pretty much in the evening on Thursday and Friday, and then noon to evening on Saturday and Sunday. The outdoor hours will end by ten o'clock every night, and the indoor hours on Friday and Saturday would go all the way till midnight, otherwise ten o'clock. As for noise and disturbances, we are not going to have any outdoor music or any live music. We might play some quiet ambient music inside. Lighting will be directed away from neighboring properties and try to go to the center as much as possible, or use ground lighting for path illumination. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Schumacher, and I believe you told us a little bit at your study meeting, but can you tell us a little about why you've decided to get into this business or your background in this, this industry?
Yeah, we are interested in it because both myself and Nathan, who couldn't make it today from a medical issue, we got our degrees at the University of Michigan through chemical engineering, and so it's a very interesting craft for us because it's a combination of the kind of art of brewing with the science of chemical engineering. It just happens to be something that we can enjoy and share with people and have a good time experimenting with.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schumacher. Is there any questions for our petitioner? We'll start with Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I love the idea of better brewing through chemistry.
Thank you.
I think that's a wonderful plan. And I applaud you for working to address the concerns of the neighbor. I do have, I guess, one just question on the beer garden. You commit to, in here, that you don't plan to have any outdoor music.
That's correct.
So while the games are going on, no, you don't want to have anything going on out there?
No, we're not planning on.
It just, it doesn't seem like a, a good mix, but I guess you know your business better than I do. The, the lighting, I think I saw one of the pictures here where you were gonna have, is, are you gonna have like lighting strung across? Did I, did I see that?
Yeah, they're gonna be strung across on ten foot posts, so out of reach and jump height.
Okay, so it would be high enough where you don't have to worry about that, and it'll be low enough where it won't interfere with the neighbors?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner? Yeah, Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Schumacher, you've worked hard to answer a lot of questions that we presented to you at the study session, but I'd like you to address the reason that you have the parking next to the neighbor and, and the retention pond, which is basically landscaping, next to the beer garden, and why that can't be switched. Have you investigated that?
Yes, I personally thought it made more sense to push the bio retention closer to the neighbor and keep the parking in the middle. The site engineer who drafted these drawings thought it was better for the bio retention to be in the center for grading plans to be able to manage the rainwater the most efficiently. I have asked him since, since the study meeting, whether it can be put on the south side again, and he said it wasn't possible, just due to the grading and drainage.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Clearly, they're chemical engineers, not civil engineers, right? Mr. Bongiello.
He had one question, it kind of goes back to Mark. Across the street, there's a beer store. Looks like it's been closed, I don't know. Everything's open, it looks like, if you look, it looks like it's still open, but I don't think it is, Mark. Is that, is that business no longer there? And if so, does anybody gonna open it up? And, I mean, obviously, there was beer right across the street. So, I mean, is that active or is that?
Yeah, okay, I, no, the answer is no. You're referring to, I know, the, the building, I think it might even have the signs still up there.
It does, it looks active.
The, the license left that location
Okay.
a long time ago, and there's no plans that I'm aware of to bring a license back there. That would not be contrary to the ordinance relative to the separation, because that would be for consumption off the premises solely. So that was an SDM license, I think, that was at that location previously, not, it was not for, for, it was only for the sale of packaged beer and wine products.
Gotcha. Just one other look, it looks like you're saving the mature trees on the site.
Yes, we want to.
It's nice, it's, it's great planning. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bongiello. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions for our petitioner, so we'll go to our audience and give them a chance to speak, and we'll have you back up here shortly, Mr. Schumacher. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item, please come forward. We have a few people in the audience wishing to speak on this item.
Either way.
Either, either podium's fine. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I, my name is Kevin Doring. My personal residence is nine eight three seven Sunset in Livonia. The zip code is four eight one five zero.
Thank you, sir.
I am here representing the property immediately east of the Livonia Masonic Temple, which is at two seven seven zero five Seven Mile Road, and our parking lot shares the lot line with the proposed site.
Yes.
And parking is our main concern. We, it proves when we have larger events, our parking is already inadequate, and what I'm hearing this evening is this site plan has a deficiency in parking. If the parking isn't, and I know the ordinance doesn't require it, but if it, their parking isn't at capacity, we're worried that the patrons will use our parking lot.
I see.
And we, we don't want to be bad neighbors, and we really don't want to gate off our parking lot. That creates a major inconvenience for us. parking lot. That creates a major inconvenience for us. And we have no desire to go to the draconian methods at stores and other, I mean, our goal is to be a good neighbor in the city. We have, and, but, we need to figure out a way that our parking lot doesn't become their parking lot. And that's our major concern. I missed, there was a blurb in the mic system for the outdoor seating, and I missed the total number that was planned for outdoors.
I think Mr. Toramina can refresh your memory on those numbers. Do you have those, Mark?
Mr. Schumacher has indicated that seating would be available for 30 people in the outdoor portion of the operation.
Okay, and I remember a parking number in the low twenties. So, that creates our concern, that our parking lot will become used as their parking lot, but, you know, not by their desire, but it's conveniently located if things aren't done to make it inconvenient for his patrons.
Sure.
And so, that's our major concern. We, as an organization, have no for or against the use of the site, other than we were hoping at one time to buy it for increasing our parking, but the owner of the property wasn't willing to go that route.
I see.
So, that is, that's our major concern, and I thank you for allowing me to address this commission. And if possible, can I get these site plan, a copy of these site plans?
Yes, you can.
To share with members of our lodge?
Yes, you can, sir. You can contact our planning department. You can call City Hall and ask for the planning department, and they can email or get you copies of anything that you would need. So, you can, you can call 734-466-2200. And just call that during the day and ask for planning, and they-
Oh, that's the city number?
Yeah.
That's why it looked so familiar.
Yeah.
Mr. Schumacher will give you, provide a copy.
Yeah, Mr. Schumacher may be able to have a copy for you as well. So, but in any case, everything is freely available, so we'll make sure that you get a copy from either the petitioner or from the city. Just as, I think we do have someone has a question.
I just had one question. What are your hours of operation?
Well, it varies. We're predominantly during the week, but we have our large social events, which are maybe six to eight times a year, will happen on a Saturday. And we, our parking is, we end up parking down the street in the neighborhood. So, if any cars drifted from next door, that would be a major problem. But overall, it wouldn't necessarily be an issue, other than we would want to dissuade people from using our parking lot for those instances when we do need it.
Certainly. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Dorn, just a couple comments based on what you said. We'll have the petitioner come forward and talk about the parking issue a little bit more to answer your question about his intent in terms of working with the neighbor to his west, I believe, to get a shared parking arrangement. But just so you know, when we talk about the number of patrons that may be inside or outside the building, we have a formula of, a ratio of either two to one or three to one that we use to determine if the parking's adequate, assuming that not every single person that comes there is gonna come in a separate vehicle, so.
I understand that. I just know that there will be occasions when a lot of people come in one vehicle and with the immediate proximity of our parking lot.
Sure.
I mean, I know things will be done with the lot line, but currently, there's a skeleton of a three-foot fence-
Right.
-that is easily stepped over by the, an average height person. And, and there's no barriers in the front to prevent walking 15 feet, and then you're in the property next door.
Right. We'll talk to the petitioner about it and try to, hopefully, calm your nerves on that one. Mr. Long?
Mr. Dorn, do you have a wall on the south side of your property, and if so, how tall is it?
On the south side, we-
Where? It's a chain link?
We, yeah, we have only fencing. The only walls is our building.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from Mr. Dorn while he's here? Mr. Bongiara?
Would you have any willingness to talk to Mr. Schumacher about sharing his parking?
Oh, we're, in the nature of being a good neighbor, we're willing to talk and work things out.
For parking, right?
Yeah. It's just, we receive a letter, and the only information we have is a article in the Livonia Observer. So-
Right.
We're here to address our concerns and where we can go forward, absolutely.
So, if he approached you, you would consider an agreement?
Oh, we could, I imagine we could work something out, but I needed, in order to get that process started, I needed to be here to voice the concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bongiara. And thank you, Mr. Dorn, for coming. That's exactly why we have these meetings. It's an opportunity for you to come and express your views and your concerns, the things that are on your mind, and to also see this item for the first time as well. So, hopefully, we can answer your questions and give you some peace of mind, and also, open those doors to dialogue with the petitioner and with the city if you need any information. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Sir, feel free to come forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Ivan Meetz. I live at 18811 Bosch, which would be almost directly kitty-corner to where this proposed microbrewery is being built, directly behind the Masonic Temple. My main objection is still a wall, any kind of wall that he's gonna put back there. I know it's city ordinance, whenever there's a business there, they want a wall up at least five feet. Well, the problem being with putting a wall up there is, we have like, Mother Nature's created like a wind tunnel that goes back there and brings a nice breeze down right through the neighborhood and stuff and everything, which keeps all the houses and stuff and everything cool and refreshing, and keeps us in the old-time neighborhood deal and stuff and everything. So, I, the Masonic Temple and the councils is trying to be forcing them to build that five-foot wall and stuff, and we've all in the neighborhood and supported not, not to have that wall put up for basically that purpose. I have no objection against the microbrewery or, you know, what he intends to do, but I was wondering if there was any other way we could design something where it wouldn't block off the airflow and stuff and everything. And also, I know that he's gonna have to put up some security lightings and stuff out there at night, and I'm just wondering how far that light's gonna spread out through the neighborhood and stuff and everything. And so, you know, I, I don't believe it'll be a really noisy establishment, but, you know, anytime you get to gathering together people, having a good time, it's gonna get a little loud once in a while, but, you know, we can put up with once in a while and stuff. So, but, still, I'd still like to keep the antiquated antique position of the neighborhood and stuff and everything, so.
Right. You don't want to see any significant changes that would block the wind.
Yeah, and stuff, you know. So, we've had it, I've lived there for 40 years now and stuff, and it's, it's been a fairly quiet and peaceful neighborhood and stuff and everything, and I like to keep it. And plus, you know, if his business is successful in doing what he plans on doing and stuff, which I hope he is, but he is gonna have an overflow problem with the parking and stuff, and that's eventually gonna end up not only maybe into the Masonic Temple or across the street, but definitely down the street of Dering and stuff and everything. So, because, you know, people are creature of habit, they're gonna, they're gonna take the shortest route possible to get to where they're going.
Yes, they do.
Other than that, I have no other misgivings about that.
Well, thank you, sir, for coming. And I don't believe there's any new walls proposed as part of this. So, I think you're okay there. And in terms of lighting, we're always very careful to make sure that businesses don't shine lights outside their property. And now with the new LED lighting, it makes it much easier to focus lighting onto the property, so it doesn't shine into your backyard or anyone else's. So, I think that'll be okay.
All right. Appreciate it.
But thank you for coming and expressing your views. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone else. Mr. Schumacher, if you'd like to please come forward. We, again, like to always give you the last word, but also, you did have a chance to hear from a couple residents about parking concerns and so on. If you want to address any of those things, you're free to.
Sure. I have a couple comments on both points. As for the overflow parking, as the neighbor mentioned, human nature is gonna go to the easiest path and the easiest next one. That would be across the street at the other businesses. There are 17 parking spots there, and then down the street would be the next option if everything was full. The entrance to the Masonic Temple is not so easy to get to. It's actually out on Seven Mile around, and you have to, actually have to go on Goff Street to get into it, I believe. So, it's not an obvious entrance, and I hope that helps us with some concerns. I do also plan to have a bike rack there, just of note, for people to bike to the property, because it is that kind of a neighborhood. I also happen to live in the neighborhood, so I have been taking the idea of someone moving into my neighborhood and starting a brewery very courteously, and I'm trying to have as minimal impact on the neighborhood as possible. We'll see what we can do and what the city says about wall and maintaining a breeze or maintaining privacy with the neighbors, and we'll do everything we can for lighting to be discreet.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Is there any additional questions for our petitioner while he's up here? Mr. Ventura, yeah?
Mr. Schumacher, you say you're working with, in your words, businesses adjacent to yours on parking?
I have reached out.
Do you have any, so, do you have any contractual commitments that will guarantee you that your customers can park on somebody else's land?
Not at this time.
How far away do you think you are?
Likely two to three weeks.
And what happens if you're unable to secure that? Let's just say, people you're working with finally say, well, we want to, we want to rent, let's say, an uneconomic-for-you rent, for space. And you walk away from it. Then what?
We would have to scale down our seating.
Do you think you can have some indication, some confirmed indication of your arrangements with adjacent property owners for parking by the time you get to City Council?
I hope to, yes. And I hope to work through the city to understand who those business owners are, instead of working through the renters to get to the landlords.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ventura.
Thank you, Ms. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Toramina?
Regarding the issue of parking, the prepared resolution does recognize the fact that there is a deficiency. So, if the, depending on what direction the Planning Commission would like to go on this, whether they would direct him either to the Zoning Board of Appeals or scale back the parking, the resolution makes the adjustment to match the number of parking spaces that are currently available on site. You could append to that, you know, either an option of either if he, to go back to the original planned seating count, should he secure the agreement with the neighboring businesses, or secure a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. But I just wanted to point that out, that the resolution, as we've repaired it, does make a slight adjustment. And what that is, is 24 seats inside the brewery building, which require 12 parking spaces, and 27 in the beer garden, that would require nine parking spaces. And so, that would bring the total up to 21. Now, that doesn't include employees, but I think Mr. Schumacher has indicated that there are only two employees-
At this time, yep.
Mostly, yeah.
All right.
So, very limited number of employees, so.
Thank you for that information, Mark.
And I don't know if he has any objection to that, if that, if that's okay with him, you know, if that seating adjustment would be acceptable to him or not at this point.
Well, you know, before we go, if we get any motions, it probably would make sense to ask Mr. Schumacher how he feels on that. If you would rather, if you're okay with a reduced seating count to have conforming parking, or you would seek a variance from the zoning board?
I think that it's very reasonable to have that reduced parking, or, and seating inside and out.
All right. Well, thank you, sir. Any other comments, questions, before we close this public hearing? All right. With that, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Schumacher, for coming forward again. And I will look for a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution.
Okay.
That the request to utilize a microbrewer license, including redeveloping the site in connection with the operation of a brew pub, Piano Shoe Brewery, at 27717 and 27719 Seven Mile Road, is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval and the following conditions. Number one, that the use of a microbrewer license at this location shall be permitted, providing that the zoning ordinance standard set forth in Section 10.03J2, requiring that there be at least 1,000 feet of separation between any other such licensed establishment is waived by the City Council. Number two, that the site plan identified as drawing number C03 dated February 27, 2019, as revised, is that the latest one we have?
If I could interrupt, if it's okay?
Sure.
I've got modified language for condition number two. If you'd like to skip that and read the rest out, and then I'll, we can go back and I can-
Okay. So, we'll come back to number two. Number three, that the maximum customer seating count shall not exceed 24 inside the brewery building, requiring 12 parking spaces, and 27 in the beer garden, requiring nine parking spaces. And then further, despite Mr. Schumacher's willingness to limit his seating, if he changes his mind, I would like to add a provision that that could increase if he should decide to chase a waiver and get permission from the Board of Zoning Approvals and City Council. Number four, that the hours of operation shall be limited to the hours as set forth in Table 1 in the letter from Piano Shoe Properties LLC dated May 7, 2019. Number five, that the landscape plan identified as LP 1 dated January 25, 2019, prepared by Nagy Devlin Land Design, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to, except that evergreen trees and/or tall evergreen shrubs shall be planted between the wall and the parking lot for additional buffering. Number six, that the underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscape and soded areas, but not including the bio-retention basins. And all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number seven, that the architectural elevation plan identified as Sheet Number PD 2 dated February 25, 2019, prepared by Joseph Phillips Architect, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number eight, that the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of building materials that shall complement that of the building. The enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass. solid panel fiberglass. The trash dumpster area shall always be maintained and, when not in use, closed. Number nine, that this site shall meet either the City of Livonia or the Wayne County Stormwater Management Ordinance, whichever applies, and shall secure any required permits, including soil erosion and sedimentation control permits. Number ten, that all light fixtures shall not exceed twenty feet in height and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. Number eleven, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number twelve, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number thirteen, that unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising, such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsor vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists, shall be prohibited. Number fourteen, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And number fifteen, pursuant to section nineteen point one zero of ordinance number five four three, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by the City Council, and unless a building permit is approved, is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period. And incorporating the new language for number two.
And that is referencing the site plan dated May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, as revised, prepared by National Consultants in Engineering, that that is approved and shall be adhered to, except that the parking spaces may be reduced in depth to eighteen feet in order to provide four feet of additional green space along the south property line.
What he said.
All right. That sounds reasonable. Is there support for the motion?
Support.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Long, supported by Mrs. McHugh. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve? Seeing no discussion, if secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mr. Banjero.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Wolschaw.
Votes aye. And the motion passes. We'll go on to City Council with an approving recommendation. You heard a number of items that'll be in that recommendation, and we wish you good luck with your project. Thank you, sir. And with that, we move on to item number three on our agenda.
Petition two thousand nineteen dash zero four dash zero two dash zero six submitted by Taiji Relax requesting waiver use approval pursuant to section eleven point zero three U of the City of Livonia, is ordinance number five four three as amended, to operate a massage establishment at three six one five five Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Yale and Levan Road in the northeast quarter of section thirty-two.
Okay. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. This is a request to operate a massage establishment, which falls under the waiver use requirements of section eleven point zero three U of the zoning ordinance. This would be located at the L.A. Shopping Plaza, which is on the south side of Plymouth Road between Yale and Levan Roads. This site is about four point eight acres in size, four hundred and eighty feet of frontage along Plymouth Road. The shopping center itself is about thirty-six thousand three hundred and fifty square feet in total area. As you can see, it's an L-shaped plaza with most of the storefronts facing north Plymouth Road, some face west towards Levan Road. This particular unit, as you can see from this graphic, would be located in what we'll call the west wing of the building. This unit is about fourteen hundred square feet in size. The layout for the massage establishment shows that there would be several semi-enclosed massage stations, there would be restrooms, as well as a front counter and lobby area. This is a change to the plan that was provided to the commission at the study meeting. The main change, and I believe this is also reflected in correspondence that was provided to the commission, indicating that the rooms, which were originally fully enclosed with doors and walls, will now be semi-enclosed, and if necessary, curtains could be drawn for what they've indicated would be for their female customers. There are a couple special requirements that apply to massage establishments. One is that it cannot be located within four hundred feet of any other massage establishments. There are no other massage establishments within four hundred feet of this location. The next special requirement applies to the separation between schools, places of worship, state-licensed daycare facilities, or public grounds. The Detroit Livonia Christadelphian Ecclesia Church is located about three hundred and fifty feet from the shopping center property. So this is going to require a waiver from City Council. There are no modifications proposed to the exterior of the building. They would be allowed one wall sign, and parking is more than adequate at L.A. Plaza to support the proposed use. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
First is from our engineering division, and it reads, "The existing parcel is assigned the address of three six zero eight three through three six one seven five Plymouth Road, with the address of three six one six three Plymouth Road being assigned to the overall parcel. The existing building is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Stormwater Main. The information submitted does not indicate any new connections to the existing utility services, so it appears that there will not be any additional impacts to the existing systems at this time. Should alterations to the existing services be required, the owner will need to provide plans to the department to determine if permits will be required. And should the owner do any work within the Plymouth Road right-of-way, they will need to contact the Michigan Department of Transportation for any permits that may be required." That letter signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter of no objection coming from our fire department dated April twenty-second, and signed by Keith Bo, Fire Marshal. Similar letter from the Division of Police dated April sixteenth, and signed by Brian Lee, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. A letter of no objection from the Inspection Department dated April thirtieth, and signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. A letter of no objection from the Department of Finance, signed by Colleen Coleman, dated April sixteenth, and a letter of no objection from the Office of the Treasurer, dated April sixteenth, and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Do we have any questions for our planning staff? Mrs. Smiley?
Mr. Toramina, could you, so there's no walls, so is this acupressure? Is this, I'm confused on that.
I think we are going to assume that this is a massage establishment. I think that we kind of covered that at the study meeting, that this would fall under the definition of massage, so we'll operate under those, under that premise, and then...
So they won't be in...
So your question regarding what type of massage therapy?
But they won't be in private rooms, they'll be in...
I'm gonna let the petitioner describe how that, I mean, I have the same information you have, including the plan and the letter, but as I understand it, they've eliminated the hard wall that would fully enclose these rooms, and instead are proposing some type of drawn curtain that they could use at times. But I'll let them describe how that, you know, when and how that would apply.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our planning staff? I don't see any. Is our petitioner here? Good evening. You can please come forward to the podium. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Again, we'll ask that you start with your name and address, please.
Oh, okay. My name is Zia. I'm living in five seven nine one North Ford Road in Canton.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And is there anything else that you would like to add from what you've heard so far about your business?
Uh, no.
Okay. And do we have any questions for our petitioner? Ms. Smiley?
You run an establishment in Westland, and this is going to be identical to that?
Yeah, it's identical. The only, the service we offer is the same. But the floor plan, like you saw there, is a little bit different. In Westlam Mall, we just separate it by, like, a curtain or something. But for this one, we're gonna have individual drywall, but we have, like, open area. There's no door or no wall in front. But we do, we may use some curtains for female customer. We do also have, like, fifty percent of female, and they want some privacy, so we may use curtains for female.
So it's a little bit like an emergency room, like, how they have those curtains that pull?
Yes.
So you wouldn't be able to see in there, right?
Sorry, what's your question?
So they wouldn't, you, somebody walking down the hall wouldn't be able to see the person getting...
For female, we use curtains.
Okay.
But for male, we don't.
And would we be, would females or males be wearing a sheet? Or is this, like, more pressure?
Yeah, they will wear a sheet.
They wear a sheet?
Yeah. But for the back, will be exposed, like, precise.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions?
Just one, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Mr. Ventura.
Do the walls between the various stations, do they go to the ceiling, or are they, how high are the walls?
It's not go to the ceiling.
They do go?
No, they don't, no.
They don't?
No.
How high do you think they are?
I didn't, I'm not sure right now, but I'm thinking about, maybe like, from the TV, something like that. Yeah.
Maybe about eight feet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magna.
Why, why do you, why do you think you need an establishment in this area? Is there, do you have demand in this area? Is there...
Yeah, we do have some demand. We have some customer, right now, they're working in Ford, because Cross Street is Ford Transmission Center, and we have some customer there. We also have some customer living in Livonia, and they ask for it. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Smiley?
How many employees do you think you're gonna have at this...
We're gonna start out with two people, one for my mom, one for, we also have one people, right now is working in Westlam Mall, he will be there also. We're gonna start with two, but because, we are thinking, because it's a new business, maybe it's kind of slow, but like, when the business on track, we may hire more people to work there.
And both the people there are licensed massage therapists?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for our petitioner? All right. I don't see any other questions at this time. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone in the audience coming forward. So is there anything else that you would like to add before we conclude? Is there any other information that you would like to provide?
Yeah, it's a family business, and actually, we start, it's a family business. We started out, like, five years ago in Westlam Mall, we thanks, they give me, they gave us an opportunity, and we worked hard trying to build some reputation. And five years later, and we come to Livonia, so we're gonna think, maybe it's another good start.
Just one question. Are you moving your business from the mall to this place?
No, it's expanding.
It's expanding, so you'll keep it in the mall as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Is there, again, if there's no other questions? I think we've gone through that, so we'll, I think we're all set. Thank you, sir. We'll make our decision.
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing, and a motion would be in order. Mr. Karen Magna.
I want to make a denying resolution. That this request to operate this massage establishment at three six one five five Plymouth Road is denied for the following reasons. Number one, that the petitioner has failed to affirmatively show, affirmatively show that the proposed use is in compliance with all of the special and general waiver use standards of the requirements set forth in sections eleven point zero three and nineteen point zero six of the zoning ordinance number five four three. Number two, that the proposed use fails to comply with the zoning ordinance standard set forth in section eleven point zero three U three, which specifies that no massage establishment shall be located within four hundred feet of a church. Number three, that the petitioner has not adequately established that there is a need for the proposed use in the shopping center. Or four, that the petitioner has not sufficiently demonstrated that the proposed use would be compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding uses in the area. And number five, that the proposed use is contrary to the goals and objectives of the zoning ordinance, which, among other things, are intended to ensure suitability and appropriateness of uses.
Is there support for the motion? Okay. We have a motion to deny by Mr. Karen Magna, supported by Mr. Ventura. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Smiley?
I am concerned about its proximity from the church. And I, I'm just not feeling comfortable with it yet, I guess is what I'm saying. So I'm gonna support the denial.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing no other discussion, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll on the motion to deny.
Karen Magna votes aye. Ventura?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh?
Aye.
Mr. Banjero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Chairman Wolschaw?
Votes aye, and the motion passes. This is a denying motion for the item. The, Mr. Toramina, this is a waiver use, does...
Ten days.
Yes. So the petitioner will have ten days in which to appeal this decision in writing to City Council. And that's where we stand. So with that, thank you for coming tonight, and we will move on to item number four on our agenda.
And number four is petition two thousand nineteen dash zero four dash zero eight dash zero six submitted by Livonia Hotel Group LLC requesting approval of all plans required by sections eighteen point four seven and eighteen point five eight of the City of Livonia zoning ordinance number five four three as amended, in connection with a proposal to construct a new six-story dual-brand hotel, A Loft and Element, at one nine two six five Victor Parkway, located on the west side of Victor Parkway between Seven Mile Road and Pembroke Avenue in the southeast quarter of section six.
All right. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. The property that is the subject of this petition is the site of the former Doc's Sport Retreat, which is on the west side of Victor Parkway between Seven Mile and Pembroke. This property is three point two acres in size. It includes a hundred and ninety-three front feet of frontage on Victor Parkway, and then approximately three hundred and twelve feet along the I two seventy-five expressway. This site is in the process of being rezoned from C two general business to C four Roman numeral one, which is high-rise commercial. The C four one designation allows buildings with a maximum height of six stories. Council gave first reading on the rezoning on January sixteenth, and the second reading and roll call are on hold pending a review of the site plan. Immediately to the north of this site is the Los Amigos Don Juan Restaurant, as well as Dave and Buster's Arcade and Bar. That site is zoned, or those properties are zoned C two general business. Immediately to the south is a pond that is used for stormwater detention for portions of Victor Corporate Park. And then east across Victor Parkway are residential properties that front along Northland Road. And then, as I indicated, adjacent to the site on the west border is the I two seventy-five, I ninety-six expressway. The building that is proposed on the site is somewhat L-shaped. It's, the hotel would be shifted a little bit to the east on the site. There would be parking, most of the parking located on the north and west sides of the proposed building. There's an existing drive approach off of Victor Parkway that would be shifted slightly to the south. That would create a new twenty-four-foot-wide main access drive. Secondary access would be available to the site in the northwest corner, where it connects to the adjacent drive aisles and parking areas that are available at the Dave and Buster's property. There is a shared access and parking agreements between these properties. Overall, the height of the building would be six stories. This would bring it to an overall height of roughly thirty or seventy-five feet to the top edge of the parapet. Within the C four zoning district... Uh, within the C four zoning district, there's a, a limitation of twenty percent as far as ground coverage. Uh, this site, uh, would have a ground coverage of about twenty-two thousand six hundred and forty-four square feet. That equates to, uh, a percentage of sixteen percent, uh, so it does conform with that, uh, requirement. Um, overall, the building would be roughly a hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred square feet. It would contain two hundred and eighteen guest, uh, rooms. This would include a hundred and twenty-two keys for the A Loft, and then, uh, ninety-six keys for the extended stay, which is the, um, which is the element, and that's on the, uh, the east side of the hotel. So the hotel is, is basically split between the, the two different brands. Uh, the A Loft, which is on the, uh, the westerly half of the building, and then the Element, uh, which is on the easterly half, uh, both of which are six stories in height, both of which would have their own, uh, distinct entrances and, uh, lobbies, as well as check-in areas. Uh, certain, uh, items would be shared between the two hotels. Uh, that would include, uh, some of the pool, uh, and some of the other, um, common elements, exercise room, and, uh, and, and guest services. Uh, but then, other than that, uh, between, besides being linked between a common hallway, they would, uh, basically operate as separate hotels, uh, each having their own separate, uh, elevator shafts as well. So, uh, requirements in terms of setbacks in the C four zone, um, uh, for a six-story building, it would be forty-nine feet for the front yard setback. In this case, they're showing seventy-four point two feet. Uh, the required, uh, setback along the highway would be fifty-five feet, in this case, they're showing almost a hundred feet. And then, uh, because this site abuts commercial zoning both to the north and south, there is no required, uh, or minimum setback requirement as long as certain, uh, building and fire codes are, are adhered to. So the height, as well as all the setbacks, as well as the maximum ground coverage, are all in compliance with the C four district regulations. Uh, with respect to parking, uh, required parking, uh, for hotels is one space per guest room, plus one space per employee. Uh, the proposed hotel requires roughly two hundred and thirty-three total parking spaces. This would include the two hundred and eighteen rooms and an estimated fifteen employees. The site plan shows a hundred and seventy-eight onsite parking spaces. However, uh, this site, as I indicated, does, uh, is subject to a cross-access and park, parking agreements with the abutting properties to the north. Plans indicate that there are, are an additional seventy-one shared spaces that are available. So combined, on and off-site, uh, available parking would total two hundred and forty-nine spaces. Uh, however, since the Dave and Buster's does operate with a deficiency, a variance will be needed for the shortfall of, uh, of parking for this hotel site. Trash is fully contained in the south, southern portion of the parking lot. Uh, stormwater would be managed, uh, using the existing detention basin on the property to the south. Uh, landscaping, a fully detailed plan is provided. It, uh, constitutes roughly twenty-one percent of the site acreage, so that fully complies with the ordinance in that respect. Looking at the design, this has been probably the one issue we've discussed the most leading up to this meeting. Uh, the petitioner is now indicating, um, instead of EFS, uh, a combination of cast stone along the, uh, portions of the two lower floors, and then metal panels for the upper, uh, four floors above that. Uh, so all maintenance-free materials, relatively speaking. Uh, you can see the design, it includes combinations of, of the wood pattern or the wood color, uh, on, uh, some of the, uh, um, corner elements of the building, and then a combination of, of grays, uh, for the most part on the balance of the building. Uh, the blue, um, feature that is on the top, that is a mechanical, uh, penthouse, um, and, uh, and that has, uh, I believe is covered with, uh, metal panels as, as well. Light fixtures are shown at thirty feet, typically we require twenty feet, in this case, they're showing, uh, thirty feet. The hotel is allowed, uh, one sign not to exceed one square feet for each foot of building frontage. Uh, we don't have details on the ground signage, but they are showing multiple wall signs that will require approval by the zoning board of appeals. These mostly relate to the A Loft, at least on these, uh, schemes, uh, we're looking at, uh, at least three, um, signs for the A Loft on top of the mechanical penthouse. Uh, an additional sign that would be located adjacent to their lobby on the north side of the building. The Element, too, has a, uh, a sign located on the upper part of the, uh, the building, on, uh, what would be the, uh, north elevation, as well as, uh, a sign on the south elevation. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
Our first letter, uh, is from our engineering department, uh, dated April twenty-fourth, and it reads, "In accordance with your request, the engineering division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time. The existing parcel is assigned the address of one nine two six five Victor Parkway. The legal description provided with the petition appears to be correct and should be used in conjunction with this petition. The existing site is currently serviced by public sanitary and water main that can be extended to the proposed building. Storm sewer detention was previously provided with the original development, so the new project will need to ensure that there is sufficient capacity in the existing system for any additional impervious areas. The submitted drawings do not indicate any proposed utility extensions, so we will review those items when full engineering drawings are submitted to this department. Any work within the I two seventy-five right-of-way may be, require permits from the Michigan Department of Transportation, depending on the access and grading required to install any proposed improvements." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter from our, uh, Livonia Fire and Rescue dated April thirtieth, and it reads, "We have no objections to this proposal, but the following stipulations. Number one, subject buildings are to be provided with an automatic sprinkler system, and onsite hydrants shall be located between fifty feet and one hundred feet from the fire department connection. Number two, access around the building shall be provided for emergency vehicles with a minimum vertical clearance of thirteen feet six inches, a turning radius of fifty-three feet wall-to-wall, and an inside turning radius of twenty-nine feet six inches. Three, a fire access road shall be provided with not less than twenty feet of unobstructed width, and have a minimum thirteen feet six inches of vertical clearance in accordance to eighteen two three four one one and eighteen two three four one two of NFPA one twenty fifteen. In regards to NFPA thirteen twenty thirteen edition, fire department connections should be of two and a half Detroit standard thread. Hydrant spacing shall be consistent with City of Livonia ordinances. Fire department access roads shall be designed and maintained to support the imposed loads of fire apparatus and shall provide with an all-weather driving surface. This division requests that the entrance drive be posted on both sides, fire lane, no parking. Eight, CO2 detection required for beverage and distribution systems and coolers, if tank or tanks are one hundred pounds or greater. Nine, commercial kitchen hood and duct fire suppression shall be a UL three hundred system and comply with NFPA ninety-six. Ten, NOX box, uh, must be installed for fire department access. And eleven, these issues and other code requirements will be addressed during plan review process." That letter is signed by Keith Bo, Fire Marshal. Next is a letter, uh, from the Division of Police, Department of Public Safety, indicating that they have no objections to the petition. That letter is signed by Brian Lee, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter, uh, from the Inspection Department dated April thirtieth that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. Number one, the outdoor parking lights are detailed at thirty feet in height. The commission and/or council may wish to review the proposed height. Two, a variance from the zoning board of appeals would be required for deficient number of parking spaces. This department has no further objections to this petition." That letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. And then the last two letters are, uh, letters of no objection coming from the Department of Finance and Office of Treasure, uh, dated April sixteenth and eight, April seventeenth respectively, and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia, and Colleen Coleman, Chief Accountant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina, is there any questions for our Planning Department?
Mr. Chair.
All right, we have Mr. Caremagna and then a couple others.
Mark, maybe I didn't hear, uh, why thirty feet on the light poles?
You know, I think, um, it probably has mostly to do with the scale of the, uh, development. We do allow for exceptions at most of our shopping centers, larger shopping complexes. Uh, they request the, the taller standards to get better light throw, uh, throughout the parking areas. So I'll, I'll let the, and, uh, uh, site engineer, uh, address that. Now whether or not they can go to twenty feet, maybe it's not a major issue, but, uh, they may not have known about our twenty-foot limitation. But, um, but, but it's not uncommon that we allow the thirty feet on some of our larger projects.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caremagna, I believe Mr. Ventura had a question.
Chairman, uh, Toramina, I'm sorry, I, I may have misheard you. So, uh, here in our write-up, um, May fourteenth, regular meeting, it talks about the only changes discussed, the study meeting involved exterior finishes of the building. On the original plan, said EFS was identified as primary finish in the upper floors. An updated rendering provided by the study meeting showed cast stone on floors one and two and metal panels on the remaining floors above, which is what I thought I understood you to say.
Correct.
Okay, the last sentence in this paragraph, however, says, "The most recent plan set provided by the architect shows the same exterior design features, but switches back to the EFS panels."
Yeah. You know, we, I, I did not have a chance to delete that sentence before it went out to print, because I think there was a mistake, there was a miscommunication between my office and the architect, where they did submit the, uh, uh, where I did have a copy of the previous drawings and, uh, and, um, but he clarified that by submitting the, the most updated, uh, plan set that you have, uh, which does show the metal panels.
A five dot zero zero R drawing at the back of this package.
That is correct, that should, if you look carefully at the, um, exterior elevation plans, hopefully you'll see where it calls out metal panels instead of EFS on the side of the building. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura, Mr. Long, did you have a question?
Uh, it was asked, ask and answer, please.
Okay, is anyone else, uh, with any questions for our planning staff? I don't see anybody, uh, so we'll go to our petitioner who's here. We'll start with whoever wants to start, I know there's several folks here from our petitioner. Again, I'll just ask you, you start with your name and address.
Got it. Uh, good evening, members of the commission, my name is Mitchell Harvey with Stonefield Engineering. Address is six oh seven Shelby Street, Detroit, Michigan. Um, I'm here representing applicant Livonia Hotel Group, and we are seeking site plan approval for the proposed dual-brand hotel located at nineteen two six five Victor Parkway. Put together a little slideshow, kinda take you guys through the site here. So the proposed site is on a three point two acre lot, and it was recommended for approval for a C four zoning by the city council back in January. So, kinda walking through, to the north, we have Dave and Buster's, um, Embassy Suites M three. To the south, we talked, Mark talked about that, uh, regional basin. And then to the east, we have Victor Parkway, and then to the west, we have the I ninety-six and, um, Seven Mile Road interchange there. Um, the site is currently the vacant sports, uh, Doc's Sports Retreat and its unused parking lot. That's a picture we took a couple weeks ago out there. And hopefully, you get a good idea of what we're proposing here, which is an eight, a two hundred and eighteen-room A Loft and Element dual-brand hotel. The A Loft would be located towards the western side, so kind of the southern leg of that L. And then to the east, we would have the Element, which would be the more extended stay option. Um, we have proposed a hundred and seventy-eight parking spaces on site. It was reviewed by Marriott, and they believe that we are self-sufficient in parking. Um, we have also proposed thirty thousand square feet of landscaping, with twenty thousand is required, and an additional fourteen trees. As far as architectural features go, um, the architect's here, so I'll leave her for any questions with that. But, um, you know, we propose significant architectural features across the site to kind of distinguish the two brands that have been blended into one six-story building. And, um, the, the building facade will be a mixture of various exterior finishes, including the Nikki Hawe wood look panels, metal panels, stone, stone veneer, and other modern, uh, finishes. Um, so it's our belief that this project for the proposed A Loft and Element dual-brand hotel will provide a destination hotel for, uh, professionals traveling through Livonia and in the surrounding areas. Yeah, so we have any, ever, people from ownership and architectural team here, so any questions, we'll be happy to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, this is an exciting, uh, proposal, very unique property. Uh, do we have any questions for our petitioner at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Bonjero.
I, Mr. Harvey, I don't, maybe you could answer it.
Yeah.
You know, you're gonna tear down Doc's, obviously, and then the footprint of this building is significantly bigger than Doc's.
Yeah.
Have you guys conducted soil samples for ground suitability?
Uh, we have them ordered. They might have came in, I'll have to double-check, but we have them ordered and we're.
Are you anticipating any, uh, cause?
No, we're moving the building further north away from that, that basin, so we shouldn't have any issues.
Okay, and then, re, in regards to parking, you, you're saying you're self-sufficient, but are you still gonna cooperate with Dave and Buster's and Los Amigos for additional parking?
Yeah, I mean, the one seventy-eight on site is more than we need, is plenty for us, but we do have that seventy-one, uh, spaces in a shared parking agreement that we don't believe there'd be any overlap in, you know, when Dave and Buster's is busy, it's generally the weekends, and when we anticipate our peak hours would be, you know, weekdays. So those shared parking spaces generally won't need to be used, but in the case that they do, it's kind of flip-flop the peak hours of parking generation.
Gotcha, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero, any other questions? Smiley?
Uh, on that matter, do you ha, uh, anticipate a restaurant in either of these, or just a coffee shop?
It's just a small, um, kind of bar area with a few menu items, not a, uh, not a restaurant where people that wouldn't be staying at the hotel would come to.
Come to, okay, that was my question, yeah. So you're not anticipating, other than your, um, clients or your guests at the, um, either the Loft or the Element would be using it?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley, any other questions for our petitioner, Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Harvey, I'm not sure if this is for you or someone else in your entourage, but just a couple of, just general questions about the, uh, the Element. Well, first of all, on the second, and on the upper floors, there's a door connect, you, you can walk between the two hotels, correct? There's a, but there's a door separating.
On the first floor?
On, on the, uh, on the, above floors where there's rooms. Looking at the floor plan, it looks like there's, like there's a door, is that a fire door? Is that a lot, door that's locked, separating the two? Can you speak to that?
I'm Susan Bowers, I'm with Bowers and Associates, twenty-four hundred South Yarn Parkway, Ann Arbor, Michigan, four eight one oh four. The only connection between the two, physical connection where you could go from one hotel to the other will be on the first floor. There's no connection on the upper floors.
Okay, I'm looking at the second floor, second level floor plan.
There's a.
Right by the stairway, it looks like there's a door.
There's supposed to be a wall there. You see, there, well, there is a door there.
Uh-huh.
Um, but it's not a, a guest-used door. It would be a, um, the cleaning staff has access to both sides, but not guests.
So it'll remain locked, and, like, except for in case of a fire.
Emergency situation.
Right, it would, it would, okay. And then, are you able to speak just, I'm just curious in this case, um, to the concept of the commons? So these are smaller rooms, and they have like a shared living area, is my understanding from reading the.
Are you talking about the Element?
At the Element, yeah, and the, uh, it would be the far west room.
Yeah, it is, it's.
Or far east, far east room.
It's a different concept, similar to something, um, what, isn't it extended stay, so, so that instead of being stuck in it, like your room per se, like a standard hotel, you have a common area that you can go to where you can watch TV, hang out, where you're not so isolated in your extended stay there.
So you've got basically four small rooms that have access, uh, so the studio commons room, is that a keyed door as well?
That's a keyed door. It's accessed by a guest, correct.
Only the people who are staying in those four rooms can get into there. Okay, that's interesting, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Long, any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions, is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? Sir, feel free to come forward. You can, uh, use that podium if you'd like. Good evening.
Good evening, Eric Kozinski, address is three seven seven three four Pickford Drive in Livonia, Michigan. I live in the subdivision to the south across Seven Mile. My apologies for not showing up to the, uh, to the study session, I wasn't aware of this till, quite frankly, just the other day when I received the email. Looking at the, uh, proposed hotel, my concern really is, uh, the height of the hotel, uh, going down Victor Parkway. Uh, the other large buildings, the Victor Five, uh, office building, and the Embassy Suites are both. The other large buildings, the Victor V office building and the Embassy Suites are both, uh, five, five stories tall. So the sixth story, um, it sticks out. This is kind of an exposed area. As you go down Victor Parkway, uh, most of the buildings are set off. Most of the buildings don't, uh, they don't pop out at you. This one kind of pops out at you. Little concerned if we establish a precedent here on this property for six feet, or six stories. Uh, there's a proposed, um, luxury apartments just across, uh, Victor Parkway. Are we going to create a situation where, oh, well, we got six stories over here, it's okay to have six stories over here, and now we're, we're building kind of out of scale for the area? So that was my, my major concern with the proposal as it, uh, as it was given. There was obvious planning by previous, uh, administrations in this area. It seems that that five-story limit was purposeful, at least from the way I'm looking at it. I'd like to see something going in this spot. I think a hotel is appropriate, but when you look at the size of the building and combine that with the parking, um, gee, if we went to five stories and that was doable for these folks, we wouldn't need the parking. Maybe that wasn't going to be an issue. Maybe this solves a couple of problems by just scaling it back a little bit. So that's my, my major concern with this proposal as it is. I don't have a problem with a hotel, just maybe a little bit less.
All right. Thank you, we appreciate that, Mr. Kozinski. Uh, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone else coming forward. Uh, again, we always give the petitioner an opportunity to step back up and address anything that you heard. Uh, the main point discussed was the, uh, size of the building. If you wanted to speak to that, you're free to.
Yeah, just real quickly, what we noticed is, as you go from the Embassy Suites going south, there's a approximately eight to 13-foot grade change as you go down. So standing further back from the building, it'll actually appear in line with some of the buildings further to the north because they're at a higher elevation. Kind of what we were, what we were thinking there to not make it so, as, as, as big.
All right. Thank you. Is there anything else that, uh, anybody would like to add, uh, to this petition so far, this presentation? I don't see anyone else wishing to speak. Is there any, uh, additional questions or comments from the Planning Commission? If not, uh, then I believe a motion would be in order on this item.
Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that this request to construct a new five-story... Sorry?
Nope.
You just chopped the floor off.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Kozinski's really happy over there.
I amend that to six-story hotel.
And don't, don't read that first part. Apparently, they've got, uh, that was a-
There was a typo.
I'm going to start over again.
That's the Easter egg.
That the site plan, I'm sorry, that this request to construct a new six-story hotel on part of the property at 28101's-
That's the wrong address.
That's what I said, don't read that.
No, that's right.
Oh, this is really butchered.
Is hereby approved, we'll, we'll insert the correct address there. Is hereby approved, subject to city council approval, and the following conditions. That the site plan identified as drawing C2 dated April 11th, 2019, as revised, prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that this approval is subject to the petitioner being granted a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals for deficient parking and any conditions related thereto. Number three, that the landscape plan identified as drawing C4 dated April 11th, 2019, as revised, prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number four, that all disturbed lawn areas shall be sotted in lieu of hydroseeding. Number five, that the underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number six, that the rendered exterior elevations plan identified as sheet plus number A5 dot 00R, prepared by Bowers &amp; Associates, received by the Planning Commission on April 30th, 2019, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number seven, that all rooftop mechanical equipment visible to the public shall be concealed on all sides by screening that shall be of compatible character, material, and color to the other exterior materials on the building. Number eight, that the three walls of the trash dumpster areas shall be a minimum of seven feet in height constructed out of building materials that shall complement that of the building, and the enclosure gate shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass and maintained and when in, not in use, closed at all times. Number nine, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number 10, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time the building permits are applied for. And number 11, pursuant to section 19 dot 10 of ordinance number 543, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by the city council, and unless the building permit is obtained, this approval shall become null and void at the expiration of said period.
You did well, Mr. Ventura. That was a difficult start, but you finished strong.
We recovered, thank you.
Is, is there a support for that motion?
Support.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Bonjero. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, if the secretary's ready, please call a roll.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Caremagna votes aye. Chairman Wolschow.
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go into city council with an approving recommendation, and we wish you the best of luck with your project. And, uh, again, we, uh, have item number five, which was the Bob's Discount Furniture, which, again, the petitioner has asked that we postpone that item to a future meeting, so we will, uh, do that, and that will take us to the pending section-
Do we need a motion to table it, or?
Uh, well, we, we, I don't know that we need to table something that we haven't started to discuss yet. Uh, I, I believe we can do that direction of the chair.
Delay it, you can delay it without a motion? Go ahead.
Mr. Tarmina, I think, believe we can do that direction of the chair to just postpone an item, is that correct?
I think it's fine.
And this is not a public hearing, so we're not obligated to hear it. So I will use my executive authority.
All right. Go right ahead.
They'll take us to, uh, pending item section of our agenda, uh, item number six.
And that is the approval of the minutes of the 1,141st public hearing, a regular meeting held by the commission on April 23rd, 2019.
And I believe all members were present. Is there a support for that?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Long, support by-
Support.
Mrs. McHugh. If there is no objection, I think we can safely show seven to approve that item, and that'll take us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission? Seeing and hearing none, uh, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I move we adjourn.
Support.
All right, motion to adjourn by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mr. Long. Again, if there's no objection, we'll safely show seven on that, and that will take us to the end of our meeting. I'd like to thank Livonia Television's staff for their contribution, and with no further business to come before the Planning Commission, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:59 PM. Thank you, and good night, Livonia.